Well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the January 24th meeting of the Planning and Zoning. My name is Sina Najjad, and along with my faithful commissioners, all welcome to our meeting. If you would, please make sure you silence your cellphones during the proceeding here, and we're gonna get started with the roll call.
Chairman Najad.
Here.
Commissioner Beatty.
Present.
Commissioner Jabbar.
Present.
Commissioner Javid absent. Commissioner Linton.
Present.
Commissioner Makin is absent. Commissioner Noyola.
Here.
Commissioner Pate.
Here.
Commissioner Kurici.
Here.
And alternate Commissioner Sinagar.
Here.
Great. I trust that everybody has received the minutes at the previous meeting and has reviewed it. I would entertain the motion to pass or add any additional comments.
I have a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the last meeting's minute.
Second.
We have a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? The ayes have it, thank you. We're gonna get started with our first case, PZ 2021-370. Mr. Boone. Oh, there's Mr. Kurici, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
You gonna sit next to Mr. Fertitta?
Sir?
You gonna sit next to Mr. Fertitta?
No, there, I'll sit behind.
Okay.
He never let us sit, he can sit behind.
Now we have a quorum, okay.
There you go.
All right. File PZ 2021-370 is a request for a preliminary plat, approval of Vision Village Phase One, Beaumont-Jefferson County, Texas. Emmanuel Baptist Church has applied for preliminary plat approval of Vision Village Phase One. The property is located on the east side of South Major and east of the intersection with Humble Road. In February of 2006, the Planning Commission approved a preliminary plat of Vision Village. The conceptual plan consists of an entry road leading to the residential lots and large lots for future church development. And you can see, let's see. Okay. And you'll see outlined there in yellow is the proposed street as well as the proposed two lots. In 2008, a preliminary plat was approved for Vision Village Section Two. The new plat reduced the size of the church parcel, adding eighteen single-family lots on part of the original church site. Section Two was approved a second time in May of 2013 with an extension in 2015. The church has now decided to proceed with the entry road, which is Emmanuel Street, outlined in yellow there, as a private street prior to development of the eastern residential lots. Section 26.03.008-2 states that "streetlights shall be installed at all intersections and at additional locations not less than 200 feet apart." Section 14.03.214 states prohibition of overhead facilities and overhead transport facilities. Electrical lines must be installed underground. And so you can see before you is the proposed preliminary plat. And based on this application, staff is recommending approval, subject to the following conditions: number one, place streetlights at a minimum of 200 linear feet apart; and condition number two, place electrical lines underground. And with that, are there any questions of staff?
Any questions for Mr. Boone? Thank you, sir. Is the applicant in the audience? Mr. King?
My name is Don King with Fitz and Shipman Engineers in Beaumont here at 1405 Cornerstone Court. I'm representing the owners, the Emmanuel Baptist Church. Actually Pastor R.D. Carrington, pastor of the church, is here as well today. Just as we said, there's a little bit of a history with this subdivision being approved or preliminary plats approved. Some of the construction is partially in place. It is our plan to utilize some of that construction. The water lines and sewer lines are in place already. Some of the storm lines are in place. They will, some of those will be removed and replaced with a better backfill material and to get the Phase One part that you see identified. Basically, it's, it was determined we want to get a starting point to get something going out there and get some small buildings for the church or something in the future. And then, once that is in place, then we will move on to some of the other areas that are identified in the master plan. So, this will be our Phase One, and like I say, we hope to build upon some of the construction that's already there and get Section One completed is our goal here within the next year. So, with that, I'll open it up, and I would say the two questions or two items that we had, the conditions, we have read those and we understand that. The street lighting, we can certainly adjust our spacing on those, and the electrical lines underground, we have actually discussed this in the past with Energy. So, those conditions, we don't have any objection to those.
Great, thank you. Any questions, ladies and gentlemen?
On your streetlights, can you go solar streetlights?
Can we go?
Solar streetlights, solar.
Solar?
Solar.
I'm not familiar, well, I haven't used those. I suppose that was something we could talk to Energy about, but whether those would be acceptable. It is a private street, so generally speaking, we try to build, even the private streets by ordinance are supposed to be built to the city standards, so we'll be matching the city standards on those.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. King? Thank you, Mr. King.
All right.
As usual, very well done. We have heard from the staff, and we also have heard from the applicant. Is there any comment or emotion?
I have a motion to approve with the conditions, two conditions.
Second. Motion? A second, Tom? Good afternoon.
Hey.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? The ayes have it, thank you. Mr. Boone, 421.
Okay. The next item is PZ 2021-421 to consider the preliminary plat of LaBelle Park subdivision Phase Two. Troy Whitehead of Schaumburg &amp; Polk has applied for preliminary plat approval. This plat will extend both Rexora Drive and Phelps Boulevard. It consists of two lots and comprises a total of 7.656 acres. Water, sanitary sewer, and storm sewer will be extended along with the proposed streets. And we should mention that, you can see the outline in front of you, the proposed plat, if you look to the intersection of the street on the, be the northeast quadrant there, that is proposed to be developed for a new business, and that project is not underway yet, I don't believe, but is proposed to be. So, that, that project is referred to as Main Event Entertainment, and they would, they're gonna construct on that lot, again, on the top right corner. The proposed driveway to this new events center will require the extension of both Rexora Drive and Phelps Boulevard. I should note, the plat does not show the required temporary cul-de-sacs at the end of the two roadways. Section 26.03.002 of the city subdivision ordinance states, "When the Planning Commission determines that there is a reasonable expectation that a dead-end street will be extended within two years, construction of a temporary cul-de-sac may be approved." And also, the Planning Commission may waive temporary cul-de-sac requirements for dead-end streets when the street is less than 200 feet in length. Now, as part of this application, the applicant is requesting a variance. If the propos, and what they're asking for is a variance from that, again, with the expectation that the Main Event facility is under construction soon. But what they're requesting is a variance in stating that if the proposed event facility does not begin construction before June 1 of 2022, if the construction is not begun by that point, then a temporary cul-de-sac would be installed at that time. And again, you can see in front of you is the proposed plat, again, the north, I guess that would be the northeast lot is where the proposed development is, and then on the south side of the road extension is the, the second lot of the preliminary plat. And based on this, planning staff is recommending approval of the subdivision plat as well as the variance, subject to the following note being placed on the plat, that a temporary cul-de-sac will be required at the end of Rexora Drive and Phelps Drive if the proposed new construction project at the northwest corner of the intersection does not start before July 1, 2022. That's right, it should be northeast. And with that, are there any questions of staff?
I have a question. On this temporary cul-de-sac, you referred to the start date, but you never mentioned anything about completion of the project. So what if they come in and start and don't do anything else, and then what happens to this cul-de-sac requirement?
Right, so if for some reason they start and don't finish, you could put a closing date on that condition as well.
I think we should put a closing date, and I also think we should have the temporary cul-de-sac stated on the drawings, just to make sure that it is gonna happen.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Boone? Is the applicant in the audience? Mr. Whitehead, good afternoon to you.
Good afternoon.
Haven't seen you in a long time.
Been awhile.
You doing okay?
Yes, sir.
Great, great. Did you hear the discussion about the cul-de-sac?
Yes, I did.
Being on the drawing and also having an end date for it?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any issues with that?
Uh, I don't think I have any issues with that.
Great.
They're, my understanding is they're gonna start construction on Main Event next week.
Okay, great.
So, and they're very, very active on it, so.
Good. Do you have any additional information you'd like to give us?
Uh, we did add a note on the preliminary plat in regards as what Mr. Boone had stated to about the, the cul-de-sacs being placed if the construction hadn't began by July 1.
Perfect. Any other questions for Mr. Whitehead?
Could you state your address for the record?
Schaumburg &amp; Polk, 8865 College Street.
Thank you very much. Always good to see you.
You too. Thank you, sir.
We've heard the staff's presentation, and also the applicant is agreeable to showing the cul-de-sac on the drawing and having an end date for completing the, the next project, so with that in mind, I would entertain a motion.
I have a motion to approve with two conditions, about cul-de-sac and the end date.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? The ayes have it, thank you. Uh, we're gonna go to Mr. Boone and 430.
Okay. File PZ 2021-430 is to consider a request for approval of a replat of lots 18 through 20 into lots 18A and 20A, Block 1, Audubon Park, Beaumont-Jefferson County, Texas. Aaron Ward of Faust Engineering and Surveying Incorporated has requested approval of a replat of lots 18 through 20 into lots 18A and 20A, Block 1, Audubon Park, Beaumont-Jefferson County, Texas. The intention of this replat is to split a lot and add it to the adjacent two lots. And you can see, let's see, if we have an aerial, we don't. So essentially what they're doing is splitting that lot that's in the corner and adding it to the two adjacent lots. Because this is a residential replat, we have sent out 14 notices to area property owners, and we have received two responses in favor and zero in opposition. But based on this application, it meets all the minimum requirements of the subdivision regulations, and staff is recommending approval of this replat. Are there any questions of staff?
Any questions for Mr. Boone? Is the applicant in the audience?
Good afternoon, sir.
Good evening.
Would you just state your name and address for the record?
My name is Colby Bracken with Access Surveyors, 11025 Old Both Road, that's here in Beaumont.
Mr. Bracken, do you have any additional information you'd like to give us?
Not necessarily. It's the same owner of Lot 20 and the current Lot 19, so they've got with their neighbor, and they would like to split the current Lot 19 up, and then Lot 18 would absorb that half, and Lot 20 would absorb the rest, so it's pretty simple.
Great. Any questions, ladies and gentlemen? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. We've heard from the applicant and also the staff, and there is no public comment, and I entertain a motion.
I have a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? The ayes have it. 443.
Okay. File PZ 2021-443 is to request to abandon a portion of the Sawyer Street right-of-way. Mark Fertitta, manager of SET Asset Properties LLC, the owner of 191 11th Street, is requesting an abandonment of this portion of Sawyer Street. In 2017, an almost five-foot section of the street was previously abandoned. The request was made to satisfy a requirement of a potential lesor of the property. Previously, the property had operated under a license to encroach, but this arrangement was problematic, given that the tenant was performing extensive upgrades to the property. In 2021, a survey of the property revealed that the requested abandonment was not large enough and that the building was still encroaching within the right-of-way. This abandonment would correct the issue of the encroachment. You can see before you, the shaded area is the right-of-way, and the bolded area is the additional requested abandonment. And that is the exhibit we have, are there any, well, I should say that planning staff is recommending approval of this request.
I have done some work, it appears that my company's done some work on this building, so I am gonna abstain from voting. Is there any questions for Mr. Boone? Is the applicant in the audience?
I am, sir.
Mr. Fertitta, do you have any additional comments?
I do not have any.
All right. And this does not require a public hearing. Is there any question from the commission?
No.
All right, so I entertain a motion.
This chair, move for approval.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, and I'm abstaining from voting. Thank you. Mr. Boone, 445.
All right. 2021-445 is a request for preliminary plat approval of I-10, Interstate I-10 Industrial Park, Jefferson County, Texas. Zach Rowe of Whitley Oliver Engineering has requested preliminary plat approval of Interstate 10 Industrial Park. This street, it should be noted, was constructed without the benefit of city review, but were reviewed and accepted by Jefferson County. The proposed right-of-way ranges from 100 feet to 150 feet wide, and the paved street itself is 36 feet wide. Water will be provided by West Jefferson County Municipal Water District, and sewer will be handled on-site. A 12.62 acre detention pond has been constructed to accommodate drainage on the property. And as the detention pond is sitting in Energy's easement, we are requesting that the developer obtain approval for use of Energy's property for the encroachment. The plat does not show the street width or temporary cul-de-sac radius. Section 26.03.002-7 states the proposed plan of subdivision, showing streets, blocks, lots, alleys, easements, buildings, lines, parks, and other such areas with principal dimensions be shown. And again, shown before you is the preliminary plat. You can see it's in, this is the western portion and then the eastern portion. And in your staff report, you do have a vicinity map kind of showing where it's located, but based on the proposed application, planning staff is recommending approval of this preliminary plat, subject to the following conditions: number one, obtain permission from Energy to encroach in their easement; and then two, provide the width of the industrial parkway and the radius of the temporary cul-de-sac. And with that, are there any questions of staff?
I have a question.
Yes.
Could you explain to me what, when it says sewage will be handled on-site, what is that?
So, the engineer is here, and they can speak to the, what their plans are for the sanitary system.
We'll ask him.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Boone? Great. Is the applicant in the audience?
Good afternoon, sir. Could you state your name and address for the record, and we have a couple of questions to ask.
Zach Rowe, Whitley Oliver Engineering, 4351 Crow Road.
Well, good afternoon, Mr. Rowe. Do you have any additional information you'd like to give us?
Uh, we have revised the preliminary plat to show the pavement width, as noted, and the temporary cul-de-sac dimension, which is 38 feet.
Great. And would you explain to us, what are you gonna do with the sewage being on-site?
Because West Jefferson doesn't have a treatment facility, all sewer will be handled on-site by septic systems.
Individual?
Individual septic systems.
Okay. That's good.
Great. Any other questions, ladies and gentlemen? Thank you very much, sir.
Yes, sir. My name is Sam Kurici, and my office is at 445 North 14th Street. Little history, just so you'll know. We came to the city two years ago. This is in the ETJ. We came to the city two years ago and asked them if they would participate or want to be involved in bringing us sewer and water to the property. City declined.
Okay.
Kyle, met with Kyle, met with Dr. Majdalani. They declined. So we went to West Jefferson for our water, and we're gonna use an aerobic system for the smaller sites out there. And then, we have a large user, two large users, that the, West Jefferson Water maintains a force-fed line going down 124 that picked up the sewer at David Hearn's apartment way out there where that steamboat museum is and stuff. Well, he put in a force-fed line running down 124, and it ties into the City of Beaumont sewer line. And he, the, West Jefferson pays the City of Beaumont so much money for dumping so much sewer in there, or whatever, however they do it. And we have a user now that has contacted us that is gonna, is looking at buying 30 acres of land from us and gonna bill, have probably 50 or 60 employees. And they are thinking seriously about putting in a lift station. You have to go underneath the railroad tracks, underneath Highway 124, and tie into that line. And, but that's when you're talking about 50 or 60 employees, and you're talking about the kind of facility that's gonna be built there, that's a miniscule amount of money. So, that's what happened with sewer and water. And you have the Ellen V A, in our, in fair, in defense of the city, you have, in order to bring, they have a huge sewer line and big water line, but the sewer line is right at the corner of 124 and Major Drive. In order to get it to us, they would have to go under the Nell and V A Canal, under the Jefferson County Drainage District Six ditch into our property. That's going down, going up, going down, going up, and it just didn't make sense. We would've had to put a lift station on our side, and then we could force it into there. We talked about it, we chose not to do it. And so we've done this, and the comment that was made about permission from Energy, I don't really need permission from Energy. I have two easements that allow me to put a road underneath that high line, and it forbids me from building a structure. The only thing that we have under Energy's high line is a detention pond, that is our detention pond. It's a 12-acre detention pond that we put in. We put it into Drainage District Six specs. And they have voiced to us that they will, after we get it developed and start selling some lots, we have two lots under contract right now, that we will probably, they will probably take over that detention pond. It's gonna be about an 18-acre detention pond. Never built a detention pond in my life, and all I can tell you is, you don't wanna build detention ponds. We have a home, we have a business owners' association out there, because until we, till the Drainage District takes it over, we have to maintain the pond. In order to get security lights out there, we have to have a business owners' association because the county doesn't provide security lights. And the only way Energy will hang security lights, or hang, I guess, streetlights, is you have to have a homeowners' association, so that they can bill one person. And that's how we'll get security lights, or streetlights, out there. And the streets put in 36 feet or 38 feet wide. And when we put in the streets, we went to the county, and the county said, "We want asphalt streets." And I said, "That's fine, but I really don't wanna build asphalt streets." I said, "This is industrial park, and there gonna be a lot of traffic on it." Bo offered, yeah, called me and said, "Please put concrete in. We want concrete." And we put concrete in there. And it looks, you've probably never been out there, but it looks pretty nice, but it's pretty expensive to do what we did. So, we do have easements, we do have right, we do have the right to put a street underneath those high lines. This property's been farmed for a couple of hundred, about 100 years probably, by the same family. And those easements were signed by those people back in 69. And it's perfect, it says that we have the right to cross underneath it. We do not have the right to build a structure or an object. Now, you define what a structure is, or you define what an object is, and then we can talk about it. But we don't think a road is a structure. We don't think an object, I mean, we don't think a road is an object or a structure, we don't think either one of, we don't think it's gonna comply. We could easily call that pond a crawfish pond if we wanted to. But it's, it's a detention pond, so, but in the spirit of negotiating with the city, we have gone to Energy and said, "We need a right to encroach in their easement." And I just hung up the phone with their attorney this afternoon, and they asked us for, to draw up a certain document, and we're gonna draw up a separate document for them, and they seem to think that everything will be just fine. So, little history behind this development. It's been in the planning for some time, so. Any other questions, I'll be glad to answer them. By the way, Zach is my adopted son. He will start coming up here and talking, 'cause as you get older, you know, you can't remember what you're supposed to talk about, so. He's gonna be, and he's an Aggie, too, and that makes him perfect then. So, any other questions?
It was a pleasure hearing you, Mr.
Sir?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
See you soon. Okay, we heard from the applicant, and Mr. Kurici, and also the staff, and no other questions? You're not gonna ask that question anymore, are you? All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition?
We didn't have a motion.
We didn't have a motion yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. I got mesmerized by the speech, what can I say? Thank you, Mr. Kurici. Is there a motion?
I have a motion to approve with three conditions.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? The ayes have it, thank you. And in opposition? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Okay. File PZ twenty-two-one-four-four-two, uh, might seem very familiar to you, but this is the final plat uh, for the subdivision in question. Zach Rowe, Whitley Oliver Engineering LLC has requested final plat approval of Interstate ten Industrial Park. The street was constructed without the benefit of the city review again. Um, and again, this is essentially the same thing that we discussed prior. But however, given the, the timeframe and how the streets were developed with the county instead of the city, we're, uh, bringing the final plat to you, um, just to make sure everything is, uh, in order. But staff is recommending, um, is recommending approval of this final plat with the only condition of obtaining permission from energy to encroach in their easement, which sounds like from Mr. Perigi's comments, they're well on their way to doing.
Any questions for Mr. Boone? Uh, Mr. Rowe, to make this simpler, do you have any additional comments? Thank you very much. Uh, I would entertain a motion.
I have a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? The ayes have it. Mr. Boone, four-five-three.
All right. Four-five-three is to consider a request for preliminary plat approval of Harden Ranch, Jefferson County, Texas. Aaron Ward of Faust Engineering and Surveying has requested preliminary plat approval of Harden Ranch. Uh, the project is located north of Gentry Road, just east of Rain's Road in the planning area of the City of Beaumont's extraterritorial jurisdiction. The twenty-six-point-six-seven acre development is a thirty-nine-lot, single-family residential subdivision. Uh, all lots will have frontage on the proposed Ryan Road except for two lots, which will front on Gentry Road. The proposed Ryan Road will have an eighty-foot right-of-way and thirty-foot-wide asphalt street with open ditches. Uh, water will be provided by Meeker Water Supply Corporation and sewer will be individual septic systems. Uh, since this subdivision does lie within the planning area of the ETJ, again, this is beyond two miles out uh, the city limits, Jefferson County Construction specifications should apply. Um, based on this application, uh, this preliminary plat meets all the minimum requirements of the subdivision regulations and staff is recommending approval. And with that, are there any questions of staff?
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Boone. Is the applicant in the audience? Mr. Faust, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name's Richard Faust. I'm with Faust Engineering in Beaumont. Our address is fifty-five, fifty-five fifty-six freeway suite, oh, excuse me, lovely city of Beaumont, Texas. I, I really don't have anything to add. Um...
Well, that's okay. Any questions for Mr. Faust? Well, thank you for coming, sir.
Thank you.
Great. We heard from the applicant and also the staff. And, uh, there are no conditions. So, I would entertain a motion.
I have a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? The ayes have it. Thank you. Great.
All right. So, the final item on the regular agenda is PZ twenty-two-one-four-fifty-four and it's to consider a request for preliminary plat approval of Springwood Section Three. Uh, Faust Engineering and Surveying has requested preliminary plat approval of Springwood Section Three. The project is located within the City of Beaumont at the northwest end of Alexis Street, northwest of RFD Road. Uh, the development is a three-point-three-acre, thirteen-lot, single-family residential subdivision. Kayla, a residential street, will have a fifty-foot right-of-way and twenty-eight-foot-wide pavement. The extension of Alexis is a minor collector and it will have a sixty-foot right-of-way and thirty-six-foot-wide pavement. Utilities will be provided by extension of the City of Beaumont Water and Sewer. Uh, I should note that subdivision regulations do require streetlights within the city and staff is recommending approval of this preliminary plat subject to the condition that they, that streetlights are provided as required by the ordinance. With that, are there any questions of staff?
Thank you, Mr. Boone. Any questions for Mr. Boone? Nope. Great. Uh, Mr. Faust, I'll make this real easy. You understand about the streetlights?
Yes, sir.
And you agree with it?
Yes, sir.
Well, thank you very much. We've heard from the applicant and also the applicant agrees with the recommendation of the staff and the, uh, the comment that they had, so, uh, I would entertain a motion.
I have a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? The ayes have it. Thank you. Thank, this is, this concludes our regular meeting and now we're gonna start with our joint meeting with the, uh, the City Council. Madam Mayor, we're all ears.
Thank you. Madam Mayor.
Mayor Mutian. Mayor Pertim Samuel. Uh, Councilmember Felshaw.
Rose.
Councilmember Turner, absent. Councilmember Neil, absent. Councilmember Gutz, absent. Councilmember Durio.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. This is a joint meeting between the Beaumont City Council and Planning and Zoning Commission. This will be the only opportunity that you will have to present, uh, your cases. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Committee will hear the cases. They will make a decision on today to recommend to the council either to approve or not to approve. It will come then to the council at the next City Council meeting within the next one to two weeks. And therefore, we will then make a decision on everything that's presented on today. This will be the only opportunity to make any, um, changes or opposition to anything that's voted on today. So, if you don't speak on today, you will not have an opportunity, uh, to speak to the council. So, make sure that you present your cases on today. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're gonna get started with the first case, PZ two-zero-two-one-four-ten. Mr. Boone?
Yes, sir. Uh, PZ twenty-two-one-four-ten is to consider a request for a revised specific use permit to allow additional cabins in a recreational vehicle park at sixty-eight-hundred South Major Drive. In two thousand and six, Thomas Taylor received a specific use permit for a recreational vehicle or RV park at this location. The fifteen-acre tract of land includes a seven-acre lake and an LNV canal right-of-way, leaving approximately seven acres that are usable for the recreational vehicle park. The park currently can accommodate seventy RVs. Uh, shortly after acceptance of this RV park, the city's RV ordinance was updated to current standards and those standards are reflected in this existing park. Hidden Lake RV Park would like to now add three prefab cabins to be leased by the month or year. Each cabin is approximately three hundred square feet and will have its own parking space. Um, an existing City of Beaumont water line and easement is located on the property, however, and we have received comments that no structure requiring a permanent foundation may be placed over a city easement. So, we do wanna bring that to the attention of the developer. Uh, this water line feeds an adjacent fire apparatus. Access for fire department to this apparatus must be maintained. And let me go ahead and walk through the slides. The property in question there is outlined in red. You can see the, uh, the water feature as well as the RV. This is the site plan. And this, let me go back and show you kinda the curve there and it's highlighted in blue. This is the, the three, uh, the location of the three cabins that they wanna place. This is an aerial view, um, of that location. This is a subject property entering into the park. This is a subject property. You can see they poured some rock and have some RVs parking there, but I think the idea is to make it more, a little more permanent. Again, here's the subject property. You can see the lake feature in the back. Also, the subject property across from the three pads. And we have sent out seven, uh, property owner notifications. We received zero in favor, zero in opposition. So, essentially, you can see this is simply an amendment to their approved site plan. Staff is recommending approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, no permanent structure may be placed within the water utility easement and access to the adjacent fire apparatus must be maintained. With that, are there any questions of staff?
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Boone. Is the applicant in the audience? Good afternoon, sir.
I'm with Lancaster and White Architects, uh, at one oh-six-five-five-six Pine Strive, Suite two-ninety, The Woodlands, Texas, seven-seven-three-eighty.
Great. Do you have any additional information you'd like to share with us?
Uh, no, sir. Everything.
Uh, are these cabins for individual use or they're like a single-family things?
They're gonna be, yes, they're gonna be rented out on a daily, uh, weekly or monthly basis.
Okay. So, they're, they're rented out to one individual or a family, right?
Yes, correct.
Not multiple?
No, no, no. Just one.
All right. Any questions for the gentleman? Is there any additional ones that you're gonna plan on putting in?
Uh, no, this will be it.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're gonna now open the floor to public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing and I would look for a motion.
I have a motion to approve with two conditions.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? The ayes have it. Thank you. Mr. Boone, four-two-eight.
Okay. Four-two-eight is to consider a request for a revised specific use permit to allow a parking lot expansion for a church in an RCR Residential Conservation Revitalization and RS Residential Single Family District at twenty-one-seventy Reynard Street. Uh, Mount Calvary Baptist, Mount Calvary Missionary Baptist Church would like to add a new parking lot area to the church. The new concrete, concrete parking lot will provide an additional forty-four off-street parking spaces. Uh, landscaping will be required along Reynard and in required isle, and in required islands, but as the property abuts commercial lots, a perimeter landscaping and screening buffer is not required. Let me go ahead and walk you through the slides. Uh, the location of the par, par, parking lot proposed is in the, uh, red outlined area. You can see the church is just to the northeast. And this is the, uh, proposed site plan of the additional parking lot. The subject property. Church sanctuary, the view to the west, the southwest, the south, southeast. And based on this application, um, well, I should note that we did send out thirty-nine notices to area property owners. We received twelve in support and zero in opposition. Uh, based on this application, staff is recommending approval, uh, subject to one condition that the parking lot shall be landscaped as required by city ordinance. And with that, are there any questions with that?
What about parking lot, parking lot lights?
Um, they're not mandatory. But if they are provided, then, um, one thing that council, well, planning commission is recommended and council sometimes does is request or condition that they be angled away from neighboring property owners. But that would be up to, up to the commission to recommend. Okay.
Any other questions? Great. Uh, is the applicant, Mr. King?
My name is Don King again with Fitz and Shipman Engineers here in Beaumont at fourteen-oh-five Cornerstone Court, uh, representing the, uh, Mount Calvary Missionary Baptist Church. Uh, we're aware of the conditions that you're talking about here, the landscaping. We have no issue with that. And, uh, looking forward to, uh, getting this property, uh, get the parking lot built.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions for the gentleman? Thank you, Mr. King.
All right. Thank you.
Is anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. We've heard from the staff and also the applicant and he does understand the conditions. Uh, with that, I'll look for a motion.
I have a motion to approve with conditions.
Second. We have a motion to approve and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Okay. The next item is PZ twenty-two-one-four-four-six to consider a request for a revised specific use permit for a restaurant parking, um, and to add a commercial strip center with a tax office and barber shop in an RCR Residential Conservation Revitalization District at nine-five-eight and nine-seven-eight Orange, as well as thirteen-fifty Gilbert. Uh, Rosa and Suentes Francisco Castillo would like to use the property in question as an expanded parking for their proposed restaurants to be located at this location and for the commercial building to accommodate offices and beauty and barber shop. Adjacent land uses are residential along Gilbert. As such, driveway access should be located on Orange. Uh, landscaping should be used to mitigate the impact to, to the neighboring properties. In addition, sidewalks along the property are in a state of disrepair and should be repaired or replaced along the streets. Let me go ahead and show you the slides. You can see the property in question is outlined in red. This is a view of the proposed site plan. You can see College Street is to the left there and that's where the new building is being built. The, uh, additional building is highlighted there in blue. And this is a photograph of the subject property and you can see behind the boat that's parked there is the, uh, building under construction on College. This is a view to the northeast. A view to the east. The southeast. South. Southwest. And northwest, again with the building under construction. And we did send out thirty notices to area property owners. We received zero in favor and zero in opposition. Um, staff is recommending approval of this application, subject to the following conditions. Uh, number one, landscaping and screening be installed and maintained as per city ordinance requirements, including the provision of island medians and/or peninsulas and perimeter buffer. And again, I'll point out that these things are required as a, as a point of the ordinance, but we're, we're, we'd like to add them as a condition just so it's clear to the developer. Number two, irrigation systems shall be installed and maintained for all required landscaping. Three, replace and repair sidewalks along all adjacent streets. Number four, lighting to be shielded from neighboring residential properties. And finally, parking for the restaurant and commercial buildings shall be separated so that the restaurant parking lot can only be accessed from Orange Street. And with that, are there any questions of staff?
So, Mr. Boone, they, they, on the colored picture that I have, it says proposed wood frame and then down below, I go to the left though, it says subject property. That's where the new parking's gonna be?
Yes. So, where the site plan says wood frame, building under construction, that's the one that's closest to Calder, or College, rather. The proposed wood, that blue highlight, that's where the proposed new building is gonna be, as well as the additional parking.
Okay. So, we're voting on the, uh, approval of the parking lots?
Well, the, the entire project.
Okay. And the pro, the other building is already under, under construction?
It is, and it was under a prior SUP approval. We did maybe a couple of meetings ago.
Okay. Great. Great. Okay. Um, with, uh, perfect. Any questions for Mr. Boone? The applicant in the audience. Great.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm Charles Sageri, uh, eighty-seven Interstate ten north, Speed one one five, represent Ms. Rosa, and the contractor is here too as well.
Okay, Mr. Sageri, you have any additional information you'd like to give us?
No, sir.
And you agree with the five conditions that is on the
Yes.
report? All right, great. Any questions for the gentleman?
I have one. What kind of restaurant are you gonna?
Mexican.
Mexican restaurant. What are your hours gonna be?
Hours?
Yeah, I mean.
It's probably from eleven, eight, eleven.
Seven days a week, I guess, okay.
Seven days a week, some.
Okay.
Yeah.
Nice.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? Nobody is volunteering, so we close the public hearing, and, uh, we've heard from the staff and the applicant, and he agrees with the conditions from the staff report, and with that, I entertain a motion.
I have a motion to approve with five conditions.
Great, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Thank you. Mr. Boone?
All right, file PZ twenty twenty-one four fifty is to consider a request for a specific use permit to allow a bar in a GCMD general commercial multifamily dwelling district at eighty-one eighty East Tex. Uh, Baptiste Brunner is requesting the specific use permit at this location. Uh, Mr. Brunner states that his business will primarily consist of takeout or drive-through, uh, daiquiri for the customers. Um, the existing strip center is currently occupied by a convenience store in Unit One. Uh, seating will only consist of four seats at the bar. Uh, the site plan has been reviewed and existing parking is adequate for uses. Let me go ahead and show you the slides. The, um, the site is outlined here in red. You can see it's at the intersection of the East Tex Freeway, Feta Road, and Chen Lane. Uh, this is the site plan. The lease space in question is at the, the bottom. Uh, this is the site plan or the interior plan of the, uh, the drive-through daiquiri store. And if you see on the, kind of the, the four circles there, that's the bar location. I should point out that the, I believe the original intention was to not have an on-premise bar at this location, but because of some TADC rules at the state level, they have to provide a few spaces, so that's what's brought them here before you today, so. It's primarily a takeout or drive-through business. And again, this is an aerial view of the convenience store and strip center. You can see the, the truck there to the right, I believe, is the, uh, the location. This is a view to the north. This is the view to the east, to the south. And based on this application, we did send out four notices to area property owners. We received zero responses in favor and zero in opposition. And staff is recommending approval of this application.
Thank you, Mr. Boone. Any questions for the gentleman? Great, is the applicant in the audience? Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, sir. How are you doing?
Very well, thank you for asking. If you would state your name and address for the record and give us any additional information you might have.
Yes, sir. My name is Baptiste William Brunner. I live at fifteen thousand Mansions View Drive, Apartment three thousand two in Conroe, Texas, seven seven three eight four. Soon to be Beaumont, Texas afterwards. Any other questions right now, or do I state my?
Uh, just tell me a little bit about this venture you're doing.
Sure. Uh, this is a fairly new venture to Texas, uh, my understanding, sir. Uh, I'm originally from Louisiana where these types of businesses are about as common as gas stations. Uh, I have a friend who will be my supplier, who's, um, be all made products here in Texas. Right now, really, we're trying to satisfy both the city and the state's needs right now. Our license is a BG alcohol permit, and that basically requires us to have some form of indoor seating, which, uh, with the appeal meeting from November, classifies this as a drinking place, which conflicts with the zoning. We know specifically from the distributor and speaking with other daiquiri shop owners similar to this, that nobody ever comes inside unless it's really to pick up a drive-through order. If you don't have a car, you just don't feel like driving, so we do know we'll have foot traffic. Our original site plans, uh, said about eleven seats inside, and we went ahead and took that out just to satisfy the board, to really let you all know our intentions are, to not have this be a place where people are to congregate. It's strictly for to-go and to bring back to your place. So right now, we're just trying to satisfy the seats, um, satisfy both state and city, and so that's why we reduced our seating down to four. Um, but really, we don't intend to have any indoor patrons, practically zero in this case.
Uh, just because you have seat, seating in there, do you have to have security on site, or?
No, sir, not to my knowledge.
Any other questions for the gentleman?
Yeah, I do. Are you, are you gonna have any kind of food?
No, ma'am, not originally, and maybe not for this location. Being from Louisiana, though, I'd love to cook red beans and rice and gumbo, but really, that's gonna be further down the road. We're just looking to go ahead and start with this, because we are a first-time startup, don't have a whole lot of funds to completely satisfy kitchen needs and other permitting as well. So we're just starting with this.
So you have four, for seating for four?
Yes, ma'am.
But what about standing room? Can they come in and stand and?
There's really not a whole lot of standing room. We're trying to influence people to just use our to-go method in this case.
All right.
Um, it really does just seem to be better than that. I've, I've worked in bars my entire life. It's how I paid my way through college. Not looking for, uh, to deal with any of that. Just get in, get out, have, enjoy it at home.
Good. Any other questions? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, now we go to public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so the public hearing is closed. We've heard from the applicant, and, uh, I entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? The ayes have it. Thank you. Mr. Boone, four fifty-one. We're getting closed.
All right, four fifty-one is, uh, to consider a request for a specific use permit to allow a veterinarian boarding grooming facility in a GCMD general commercial multifamily dwelling district at forty-two seventy East Lucas. Uh, Kelly Case would like to open a veterinary clinic with grooming and boarding at this location. The existing veterinarian office will be expanded to include the nonprofit Pets Alive. Chain link kennels, a modular building, and parking will also be added at the rear of the property. And let's see, the parking area will need some minor modifications to meet city engineering requirements. As the parking is expanding more than twenty-five percent, landscaping of the entire parking lot will need to be brought into compliance, including a six-foot wide landscape strip between parking and East Lucas Drive, uh, two landscape islands, and a ten-foot wide landscape buffer with trees along the rear property line. Uh, Ms. Case is requesting, however, a waiver to the eight-foot fence screening requirement along the, uh, rear property line. So if you look before you, you can see the property in question there outlined in red, and as, as you go kind of to the northwest from East Lucas, that back line is the one in question where it abuts the RMH property, which is, uh, used currently as a single-family house. Um, we have sent out twenty-three notices. We received zero in favor, zero in opposition. Let me just walk you through the rest of these slides. Um, and I think you may have received an updated site plan from the original. This is, uh, what's being proposed now, so kind of a lighter gray. There's already that parking there and for the current use. Uh, but the darker gray to the rear, that's what's being added, and then you can see some outlines of, um, I think some kennels and then some, uh, a walking track, uh, that winds around the rear. Again, just an aerial photo. This is a subject property. Uh, this is the second building on the property. And this is looking kind of northwest towards that back property line. Uh, this is a view to the east, so the view to the south across East Lucas, view to the southeast. And a view to the west. And the north. And again, we've received no, no responses in favor and opposition. Uh, but staff is recommending approval of the application, subject to two conditions. Uh, number one, that parking shall be adjusted to meet city engineering requirements, and I know the applicant has been working with our, our traffic folks to resolve that. And then number two is that landscaping shall be brought into compliance with the city requirements. Um, again, I, I mentioned that the applicant had requested a waiver on, against that back property line to not require the fence, privacy fence that's required, but we, staff is recommending that that privacy fence be installed, um, again, because there is a single-family home that would abut this property. But I do believe Ms. Case is in the audience.
Any questions for the gentleman?
Yes, when you was talking about the fence, was it the eight, because it was eight-foot?
Yes, sir. So normally, when a commercial property abuts a residential property, you're required to have a buffer, which usually is ten-foot deep and then an eight-foot privacy fence. And so if you look at that line in front of you again, that separates the GCMD from the RMH, generally, a, a ten-foot landscape and then an eight-foot fence is required there as a buffer. And so Ms. Case, again, as part of the SUP process, we're allowed to, you know, council can consider waiving that. But again, because there is a single-family house up there, um, at least staff's opinion is it should be installed.
Thank you, Mr. Boone. Is there any other questions? Um, Ms. Case, good afternoon. How are you doing? Can you make it here, or should we talk from there?
I have a injury in my eye. It's all right.
All right, well, you don't pay today?
Some of y'all might remember me as a veterinarian that helped the city become No Kill, and part of what I did is started Beaumont Pets Alive, a nonprofit. And, um, I sold the clinic that I was in, so I took it to Winnie to my farm for a year. And I kept it going and saved over six hundred lives, mostly from the municipal shelter for Beaumont. And, um, decided it would be better if I could get it back into town. And this is an existing veterinary clinic, and it's just when I approached the city, and it has a second building in the back that's already deemed for grooming and boarding. And I just approached the city saying, I'm thinking about doing this, and they said, well, you probably should ask if you can have the shelter with it. And so really, I'm just adding the idea of having an adoption center so that I can help get more animals homes and save them from the euthanasial list. So that's the purpose.
Thank, uh, would you please, before I forget, state your address for the record?
Yes, my name is Kelly Case, and my home address is four six seven one eight IH ten East Winnie, Texas.
Thank you, ma'am. And continue, please.
Um, so, and you see, it's a very long narrow lot, and it didn't have a lot of parking places. It's been there a long time, so I decided we probably needed to figure out how to add, you know, at least some employee parking in that back part. Um, but it's a half acre back there, so I wanted to do some kind of trail where you walk around and have agility things for the dogs and interactive things so that as the doctors come, they can, um, see if the dogs, you know, how they play and interact and also increase their behavior, um, so that they're more adaptable to a home life. So I had great plans for doing a lot of landscaping in the back, you know, just doing it with gazebo and fountains and, and different things. Um, and the house is not directly behind me, so there's a hope really in that corner that eventually I could figure out the landowners letting me have a little exit, so I just hated to build a privacy fence way back there, when I'm gonna do a whole lot of landscaping and tree planting everywhere else. I just didn't think that was the best use of my funds, so that's why I asked for the waiver on that.
Well, I, I certainly understand that, uh, unfortunately, it is an ordinance and, uh, that we try to adhere to those because it's a single-family residence in the backside. Any questions for the lady?
Yeah, how much is the cost of the fence?
Oh, I have a price of fence. I know it's gone up a lot because of the lumber going up so much lately.
Uh, one of the things that we can consider is, is we can consider the timeline. Uh, I, I, I wouldn't suggest us going against the, uh, against the ordinance, but if, if the immediate finances are, are an issue, we can, we can entertain some kind of a timeline for that.
Right, I think the, the lot is a hundred feet wide, um, so I don't know what the rate is per foot these days, but it has gone up, but you can certainly add a condition with a timeline.
Yeah, I'd just hate for us to go against the timeline, I mean, the, the ordinance instead of precedence. But any other questions for the lady?
I hope it's gonna be a big benef- benefit to Beaumont and save lives to animals and.
Well, it looks like you have already done a great job. Thank you very much for everything you're do- you're doing. Thank you, ma'am. Have a great day, and I hope you feel better with your injury.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the, uh, public hearing. The reason for the comment, again, I'm just repeating myself, is, is the fact that there isn't ordinance. Unless there is some technical reasoning for, for going against the ordinance, we normally try to stay with it, but, uh, uh, city can, uh, city council can, can change their mind, or, or we can put a timeline for a year or something like that if, if the, uh, if the finances are an issue at this time. Uh, with that said, and there is no public, uh, comment, uh, I would put this up for a motion.
I have a motion to approve with conditions.
All right, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments from anybody? Uh, Mr. Boone, would you work with the lady on, on the fence issue?
Yeah, if, if you do want to add a time constraint, I would ask if y'all could perhaps add that to the condition.
Who set the motion? Uh, would you entertain giving them maybe a year to, to do the fence, or?
Uh, yeah, we will add to it.
Okay.
Uh, in, in a year.
Okay, so, uh, we have a, a motion with a stipulation that no later than twelve months, they would have a fence installed in the back. Mr. Boone?
I would just recommend twelve minutes, twelve months of the issuance of the CO, because if it takes her six months to get started with the project, that would, so if, if it could be from the issuance of the CO, then we could, that would give us a firm timeline. Certificate of occupancy.
Can we clear that up for the minutes? Can we, uh, just have a, a motion that's clear with conditions and the stipulation from the CO, just so it's clear on the record? Chairman.
You bet. You're gonna make it more complicated now, but I'll do it.
We have a motion to approve. Uh,
See, I thought it was.
With the condition of six months to a year.
Okay, let's just say one year.
One year, twelve months.
One year from the certificate of occupancy?
From the certificate of, uh, occupancy.
She could have paid for it by now. All right, so we have a revised motion. Who seconded that? But you agreeing with that, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. So we have a motion and a second. The attorney's happy, the clerk's writing it down, and the applicant's happy, right? Great. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? The ayes have it. Congratulations, and again, thank you very much for what you're doing, ma'am. Mr. Boone?
All right, so four
Four five five.
Four five five is requested to be withdrawn, so we would move to four fifty-six.
Great.
And that's the final item on the joint meeting, and that is to consider a request for specific use permit to allow a roll-off container and equipment storage yard in a GCMD general commercial multifamily dwelling district at thirty-four ninety-four, uh, Fennett. Uh, Raymond Richard is requesting a specific use permit to allow the roll-off container and equipment storage at this location. Uh, Mr. Richard is the owner of R and R Dozer, a demolition company. In September of twenty twenty-one, reports were received that a fence had been placed along, uh, and around the property, and dumpsters were being stored at the location. Now, Mr. Richard has, was advised that although a contract business may be located in a GCMD property, uh, outside storage requires a specific use permit. Uh, for a commercial business to operate, uh, within a, adjacent to a residential zoning, rather, the business is required to maintain a ten-foot wide landscape strip with trees and an eight-foot tall wood. with trees and an eight-foot tall wood or masonry fence along the adjacent property line. In addition, as dumpsters may create odor issues, all cleaning of the dumpsters prior to storage should be completed elsewhere. Uh, let me go ahead and walk through the, uh, slides. The site in question is outlined in red, and you'll, you'll see it's across the street from Beaumont United High School. And it is surrounded by residential properties, both in zoning and in use. This is the site plan of the proposed use. This is an aerial photo. Uh, this is a photograph of the subject property. Uh, view to the east. View to the south. To the west. Also to the west, to the northwest. And to the north, also to the north. And we did send out twenty-seven notices. We received zero in favor, zero in opposition. Staff does recommend approval of the request for the specific use permit, subject to the following conditions. Number one, install landscaping and screening to meet city ordinance requirements. Number two, clean all dumpsters before storing them at the location. And number three, shield all security lighting away from neighboring residential properties. And with that, are there any questions of staff?
Questions?
Yes. Uh, I'm assuming that all the, because it's being directly across the street from one of the high schools, is there gonna be a noise complaint with that? Because the dumpsters, I know the trucks got to go in and out, pick them up and drop them off.
Right, so it could be a consideration. I mean, it looks like they're proposing one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten dumpsters. So, there's obviously gonna be traffic going in and out. These, these appear to be open roll-offs, so a lot of times the noise complaints are related maybe to the more commercial, where they have the doors that when you drop them, they slam. Maybe these don't appear to be those kind of dumpsters. So, it is a consideration, but we feel like it's, um, you know, with the buffering, um, should be adequate to mitigate that. But it's certainly a concern, and, and the applicant may be able to shed additional light on that.
I have a question.
Yes.
You said that the fence needed to be either wood or masonry?
Yes, so.
It's a tanglin fence, right?
Right, so let me go back to the, the zoning. So, anytime a commercial property is adjacent to residential property, we, the ordinance requires a buffer. And so, as like we talked about in the prior case, you've got to have a ten-foot landscape buffer with an eight-foot wood or masonry privacy fence. And again, the idea is to screen, you know, it may be dust coming from the location, it may be noise coming from the location. So, the idea is to try to, try to isolate the commercial use from the adjacent residential use. So, that's the idea behind it.
Okay, but with the tanglin fence already being there, will the applicant be required to put the wooden fence, although y'all already have some things?
Yes, so basically, along the left side and the right side where the property abuts, the residential property, it would be, it would be required. Now, if the applicant were to request a waiver, the city council could, um, ultimately reduce that requirement, but as it stands, it is required.
Exactly.
Yes, you.
Right behind you.
Right behind you.
Good afternoon. Who, the applicant? Yes, sir.
Good afternoon.
How are you today?
Fine, how you doing?
And you'll name your address, please.
My name is Raymond Richard. I reside at eight-zero-three-three Boyte Road, Beaumont. That's outside the city limits.
You know, every time I call somebody Richard, they say Richard, and when I say Richard, they say Richard.
You identify yourself and use the word Richard. No problem.
And you don't want to be associated with that, right?
No, 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 it's not that. I can relate with that.
Would you tell us a little bit about your project, please?
Well, I'm, uh, a demolition contractor, local demolition contractor in Beaumont. I did reside next door at thirty-four ninety-eight, where I was raised up at, to this property. I live at eight-thirty-three, but I do, I put my empty dumpsters on this vacant lot. 'Cause I also own a barber shop there, which I run a commercial barber shop. It's always been a commercial property, so I didn't think it was a big disturbance for me to set boxes down, which primarily, they're all empty. Time to time, I do on a rainy day like today, I would probably set a heavy box down that has debris in it, but I don't have any kind of corbач or anything like that in it. And as, as far as the noise, it's, it's not like a dump truck. When you raise up and release it, merely rolls down and sit it down, and you disconnect the cable and suck it up and go on by your business. Uh, put that eight-foot fence around, thinking I was doing everything right. Uh, but hey, whatever needs to be done is what I intend to do to make sure everything is correct, to satisfy the city.
That is an ordinance, so you are butting against the, the residential property, and then the, the guys next door might be amicable with it now, but then if the property's sold, somebody else comes back around, they do require, so thank you.
I saw my relatives around. That's one of the reasons that helps.
Yeah, those are the best, the worst kind.
I didn't get any feedback from him, so it started off good, I'll say that.
Well, great, but these, uh, boxes are, you are a contractor, so you clean them, bring them here, store them, then reuse them?
I'm a demo contractor. I do ninety percent of the work for the city, which is these residential buildings.
Perfect.
And, uh, which is nothing, primarily wood. Put them in and bring them to the dump ground.
All right, well, thank you. Any questions for the gentleman?
Are you going to have a fence in the front also?
I have a fence completely around it.
All around it? Okay.
He doesn't have to have a solid fence on the front, that's just the roadside. Okay, well, thank you, sir.
Okay, appreciate it.
Have a great afternoon.
Same to you guys.
Is anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. Uh, we've heard from the applicant, and he is amicable to the requirements of the ordinance, and we heard from the staff. Is there a motion?
I have a motion to approve with two conditions.
Second.
Motion to approve with three conditions.
Three conditions.
And the second is with three conditions, right?
Second, yeah.
Great, thank you very much. We have a motion, and a second. Any discussions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? The ayes have it. Madam Mayor, thank you for indulging us. We're all ears to the least.
Thank you. May the goodness of God.